... Planning Commission, August 17th, 2011 to order. Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Here. First item of business is the approval of the meeting agenda. You've received the meeting agenda. Are there any comments or requests concerning the agenda? Okay. Second item, approval of the consent agenda, the minutes of the July 27th, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Any comments or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor approving the minutes of July 27th, please say aye. Yeah, please say aye. Any opposition to that? Please say nay. The next item is community comment. We invite residents to share new issues or concerns that have not been considered in the past 30 days by the commission or which are not slated for future consideration. It's an opportunity for members of the public to comment. I would ask, is there anyone in the audience that has any public, any community comments that they would like to make? This is not for items that will be on tonight's agenda, but other matters of general interest. I will assume by the lack of response that there is no community comment. Public hearings, next item on the agenda is public hearings. We do have public hearings on, scheduled for two items tonight. The first one... First item is B-11-035, variance for St. Peter's Lutheran Church and JMS Homes. Carrie, do you have any comments on that, please?
I do. The applicant has requested this item be tabled this evening or continued to your August 31st meeting. We have since discovered that one of the properties that we'll be looking at, there is a proof of parking agreement over that lot, so it cannot be used as a single-family home that was proposed. So we'll likely be just considering a variance on one of those lots, but we would ask that the Planning Commission continue this item until August 31st.
Commissioner Staunton?
That guy. Mr. Chair and Planner Teague, I noticed in the staff report that the deadline for city action is September 4th, 2011. Is that the 60-day or the 120-day deadline?
That would be the 60-day, so we will have to send out the 60-day extension.
So you'll take care of doing that?
We will. Thanks for noting that.
So with that, I would move continuance of this item to the August 31st meeting.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there any discussion? All in favor of continuing this matter until August 31st, subject to, Carrie will contact them about the 60-day variance, or the 60-day extension. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that matter is continued until August 31st. The next item for consideration is item 2011-0004.11A, subdivision at one corporate center, 7401 Metro Boulevard. Carrie?
Grateful members of the Planning Commission, this property is located along the southern border of the city in the industrial park. It's located just east of the new Public Works building. The site, it's 7401 that you see on the screen. The site currently contains a 110-square-foot, six-story office building on this six-acre site. Property is located adjacent to Nine Mile Creek that runs along Highway 100. The specific, the specific proposal before you is a preliminary plat to create a second lot on this property. The applicant, so this is a look at the preliminary plat as proposed, they're creating that little triangular-shaped piece in the northern half of the lot. The applicant has demonstrated an example of a site plan or how the site could be developed. We won't be considering that site plan this evening. What they would like to do is create this parcel, then they could market it for sale, and whoever purchases that property and develops it would have to come before the Planning Commission and Council for a site plan review. But they have done the exercise just to make sure that there would be adequate parking for the site for both lots, and they have demonstrated that. The, the site is currently Zoned POD2 Office, and as part of the park dedication requirements for this plat, they're required to pay $7,100 for each acre developed, and this, this one lot being created is one acre in size, so they would be required a park dedication fee of $7,100. In terms of the parking, based on the size of that existing office building, 454 parking stalls are required, and there are 557 out there today. With the construction of a new building, that number does come down. Using this example, 1100 and, or 11,500-square-foot building, the total number of parking stalls required for the two sites would be 498. There would be 493 remaining, but there is adequate room to provide some additional parking on that site. Again, that's something we would review as part of the site plan, site plan for development of that property. You might note that there was also a parking study that was done and included in your packet, and that study concluded that the peak demand for both of these uses is just over 300 stalls, so there really is quite enough parking out there. So with that in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Questions of the planner? Commissioner Forrest?
Regarding the parking, I'm just wondering, if that building were subsequently sold, then it would potentially not have adequate parking on that particular site, then?
Correct. When we, when we look at a site plan review for that site, we would require shared parking between the two, between the two...
That would follow through if they, with different owners and everything?
Right. That would, that would continue on with the property.
Oh, I did have one other question, and again, this isn't a site plan review, and maybe this is for the proponent, but when I was looking at the, the drawing of the sample building, that it, it looks like it extends beyond the setback for that particular parcel, but I don't know if that, how much difference that would make, but it just wasn't sure.
The building that you see here on the site, the required setbacks would be at the perimeter lot lines. Because these two properties are zoned the same, they don't need to maintain a setback between the slot line here. So the, the required setbacks would be from Highway 100 and Metro Boulevard, and, and the building that you see here would conform to those setbacks.
Good. Yeah, it said building setback on that other line, so that's what I was wondering. Thanks.
But just to be sure, the, the building that's shown as proposed building is just that? It's a conceptual thing?
It's just a conceptual drawing, right.
Commissioner Plaidter?
Is there a cross-ass access easement or something for parking here that's proposed between the two parcels, or how is that enforceable going forward, or how does, how does that work?
That would be required as part of the site plan review for when this property is proposed for development. Before we would approve anything, we would condition any approval on a cross-parking access agreement that would be filed on both properties.
With respect to that, right now, both parcels would be owned by the same people. I would assume that if they proposed to sell one of those lots, that they would, at that time, take care of the, the parking easement, rather than wait until both lots are sold and then somebody tries to develop on that second lot?
They should do that, correct, because as a standalone site, parking would be tight. Or they, they wouldn't be able to meet the parking, depending on the size of the building.
Other questions? Commissioner Staunton?
So what if they don't? I guess I'm trying to understand the nature of the condition on the subdivision. Is, you know, are we requiring that there be an easement?
Not as part of the, the subdivision, although that's something to think about, so that that's, in fact, now, the more I think about it, I think we should get that condition, so it is filed on both properties, that a shared parking arrangement is necessary for development of that northern lot.
At least it puts a purchaser of that, I mean, they probably should be on notice of it just from common sense, but it at least puts them on notice that, that, you know, you're gonna need more, you need to have that easement.
Yep.
Yeah, right.
Well, otherwise, the buyers can have a tough negotiation.
Yeah, we don't want to get put in the position also, if we've created a lot, that can't be built without, unless variances are needed, so it protects us as well.
We'll end up refereeing that.
Other questions of staff? Thank you, Carrie. Does the proponent wish to make a presentation concerning this request and recommendation? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mike Brandt with MFRA, the consulting engineer for the project, 14828th Avenue North in Plymouth.
Was that Wren?
Brandt. MFRA.
Okay.
Really, we have no comments. We agree with staff recommendation on the project. We stand for any questions.
Okay. Are there any, are there any questions of the proponent? Commissioner Forrest?
I'm just curious how developed that is, as far as, you know, we did get paperwork that showed a drawing of a proposed building possibly, and then mentioned in the parking, excuse me, the parking study, that it would be a daycare center, and I'm just kinda curious how far along around this point.
That is just one particular type of use that's been interested in the parcel.
Okay, so then, that makes me question the validity of the parking study, then, if it could be a much more intensive use, it could be a completely different result.
There's potential of that, but really, a daycare center or an office-type building would be rather similar in that type of use. It's really the same square footage that could be proposed on that type parcel. It's something that if a different use came forward, they would have to update the parking study and take a look at it. It would be dictated by the current situation out there.
Right, the peak hours.
And the use is kinda dictated by how much available parking there really is.
Thanks.
Other questions of the proponent? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brandt. Do any other members wish to comment on this proposal? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. We'll bring this matter up to this commission for discussion. Any comments or discussion on the proposal? Okay, is there, Commissioner Carpenter?
Say, I'll jump in and just offer that, that at least at this point, it strikes me that the proposal's reasonable, the parking issue, it sounds like we can address through the shared use and access, or shared parking and access requirements. The idea of having that done now as opposed to later seems like a very good idea. So with that, I think I would, I would support the proposal.
Okay. Any other comments? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve the proposal, subject to the requirements set forth, and the conditions set forth in the staff report, as well as the requirement for a mandatory parking agreement and shared use, or shared parking arrangement and access arrangement be entered into at this time by the owner and recorded against the property.
Okay, there's been a motion made. Is there a second? Second? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the proposal, subject to the findings in the staff report and the conditions of the staff report, and in addition, the condition that a shared use easement arrangement be made with respect to parking, and that be made now and recorded as part of the property. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Just a quick comment, if the easement would be for both parking and access, cross ass, cross access and cross parking.
Right, didn't I say that?
I'm not sure you did, but if you did, I apologize.
Is the secondor okay with that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the proposal 2011-0004.11A is approved, subject to the conditions, the findings and conditions. The next item on the agenda is a, this is not a public, public hearing issue, we are on reports and recommendations, we have a sketch plan review for 6996 France Avenue South. Carrie?
This property is located down in the southeast corner of the city. It's the southwest intersection of France and 70th. It's the existing Sinclair gas station. Couple of pictures as it looks today. Property is currently Zoned PCD4, which the allowed uses in that zoning district are all automotive-related, car washes, gas station, automobile service repair. Notice that the adjacent property is Zoned PCD3, same zoning district as Southdale, our more intense commercial zoning district. The applicant is proposing to tear down the Sinclair station and would build a 6,600-square-foot retail building. No use is proposed in the space at this time, other than just the 6,600-square-foot retail building. This is a look, as put together by DJR Architects, of what the building would look like up on the street, building kinda pulled up within the required setbacks. So a rezoning is required, and in the application, the applicant indicated a PCD or PUD rezoning. This would seem to be a good candidate for a PUD in this, in this case. The comprehensive plan indicates, you recall, we have this, this map within the comprehensive plan that talks about potential areas of change, and this property is located within one of those areas, and the plan says that before any rezoning takes place, a small area plan is, is necessary. So we're doing similar to what we did with the 44th and France, sketch plan proposal that you recall with Ed Noonan, is getting a read from the city council, and we'd look for a recommendation from Planning Commission as well, as to whether a small area study is needed. Again, this is a pretty small-scale proposal. It wouldn't seem to rise to the level of the need for a small area plan. The comprehensive plan guides the site for office residential, our OR designation, and within that designation, it does talk about limited retail uses allowed within that area. So when looking at limited-type retail uses, PCD1 is our more, less intense land uses. So staff put together a comparison of the, the PCD1 zoning requirements, and as the chart indicates, several variances would be needed with that standard zoning designation. The building setback is pulled up to the street 14 feet away. The parking lot is pulled up to the street, there'd be variances needed for that. And also the parking stalls, there are 38 proposed, and for a retail building like that, they would need 38. So through the PUD, we could build in that flexibility, and those could become the zoning standards for the site. The only concern staff would have is, you recall the, the site at 69th and York, where the CVS is being built now? You may recall the building that was originally approved on that site had much more detailed architecture, and a building pulled up to the street, and believed there were two buildings. That project never was built, and we got the CVS that's built today. With the, with the PUD zoning, we could make sure that a building, you know, if, if this is something that the Planning Commission and Council likes, with the PUD zoning, we could ensure that that building gets built, and there's not that, that bait-and-switch kinda thing. So with that, I will throw it back to the, to the Planning Commission for any questions, or the, the applicant is here for a presentation as well.
Commissioner Plaidter?
Could you just give a little more detail on why you're recommending the PCD1 versus the 3, that's like the surrounding area there? You know, going down the street, there's other retail and things along that street, so I'm just curious why staff came to that conclusion.
Yeah, but I would recommend a PUD rezoning for this site, but we use the PCD1 because the comprehensive plan talks about limited retail on the west side of France, and the PCD1 is our more, less intense commercial land use. So I just use that PCD1 as a comparison for setbacks. The zoning ordinance talks about, we should start, when considering a PUD, start with a base underlying zoning. PCD1 and 3 standards for setbacks are generally the same anyway, but that was why we chose
Other questions of staff? So Carrie, just to be sure, tonight, this is a sketch plan review, we're not being asked to take any action. We are here to hear what the developer has to say about his ideas, or her ideas, as the case may be, and to give our general reactions to the concept. No commitments are being made with respect to anything that we as a Planning Commission or individual commissioners might do, and there's no commitment on the part of the city. Is that basically what a sketch plan's all about?
That's correct. It's not a binding decision by the council or recommendation.
Okay. Will, will there be an opportunity for the sketch plan review to be heard by the city council, or is this the only time that this is heard?
The city council will review this in the sketch plan form. We're anticipating, depending on how things go here, September 6th, the council would consider it.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions of staff? Thank you. Would the proponent or the developer care to make any presentation?
... DJR Architects, 333 Y. West, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Oh, thank you. Just a few words that will be brief. In looking at the site under the existing zoning, if you follow that, there'd be absolutely no, and you took the setbacks through, there'd be actually very little site to produce a building, so in effect, but that rules, just leave an existing gas station. We wanted to create a, a stronger project, and really, since this is what you described during a change, this may be the first move in which we start developing what I call some street-oriented retail, in which we make it in the corner. This is a rather significant corner in Edina, since this is a gateway to 70th, which is undergoing a major reconstruction and a more park-like atmosphere, and looking at this corner, we thought this may be the first anchor, so to speak, that may start to guide what may be future development in area, in which starts to address the street, create a concept that's more pedestrian-friendly, sort of soften the auto-oriented nature of the district and that area, and so hence, this is a plan we developed to work. Let's see if I can reverse this, and develop this way, because what it allowed is our ability to get the building in a corner and tuck the parking behind, and it made a lot of sense on the sites that say adjoining uses, as Carrie showed before, are all retail-related. And so the fact that we can strengthen the corner, create the retail, work the parking behind, and we have entrances that work on the street and the rear, set a, what I believe is a nice precedent that hopefully the other retails will follow in this area, and start to create an evolution of the area, since Southdale is an area that will undergo change, we're probably expecting that, due to the age of the buildings, and this is probably one of the first ones as on a critical corner. So that's essentially approach. It's a strong corner, the leasing, I'll never use the word guaranteed in life, but I hope it's easy on this, which is nice, and I cannot reveal any, any names, of course, but I will say that we've had good activity and very strong interest on this, and this, in considering this building, which is not the traditional strip retail, it's nice to see that. So that concludes my presentation. I stand up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duvallis. I, I have a question. Do you have, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Carpenter?
What is the building that's immediately north of that? I'm trying to remember.
I think it's a, it is a two-story office building, then I think it's Room and Board, the one that has the landscape, if I remember right. I hope I have my tenants right.
No, those, those go south, sorry. Those go south.
Yeah, that's south. So it's a, it's an office building that sits north of us.
And then next to the office.
And then a bank, I think, is on the corner. I think it's a bank, the office building, and then our building, that's it.
Right. What is?
Correct, there's a veterinary clinic just to the west.
Yeah, correct, on 70th, there's a vet clinic.
And a daycare.
And a daycare on the other side, right?
Right.
Correct.
Do you, do you have any thoughts about staff's idea that this could be rezoned under PUD as opposed to PCD1, 2, or 3?
The PUD, I sort of agree with Carrie's analysis, PUD I think is a more logical way, because it will allow staff to stay engaged in the planning commission in terms of the final evolution of this project, and so that's how I would concur with Carrie in terms of working with the city to guide this project and develop it, where if we do the other method, you basically hand it off to zoning and zoning guides, as opposed to the PUD process, in which there's, remains an interactive relationship. So, you know, my recommendation would be to use the PUD method on this, because we can sort of guide this building together and develop it, since this is a first in the area, it's one that we all hope we get right to set a good precedent for what may follow.
Commissioner Potts?
I, I like what we see here in the, the sketch plan, with the strong corner. I think taking the, the access off France Avenue for the right end and narrowing it down will be beneficial to, to traffic. Most people will turn right on the 70th and then into the property. Question maybe for both applicant and staff, how, you know, with, with retail, it's notoriously difficult to have parking on one side of the building and entrance on another. How, how can we protect against not having what's on, the, the building that fronts on France Avenue be essentially the back of the building with entries off the parking lot?
I can answer that, just from experience other buildings. I'll give one example, which is in downtown Hopkins, the cornerstone development's been built for about maybe seven years right now, which is a similar situation. built for about maybe seven years right now, which is a similar situation. Esconded means above it, and it's on the bound. Retail has stayed full. The tenants in there are some nationals like Chipotle and then some locals. So they've had a mix of national tenants and what I'll call local tenants. They've adapted to that layout pretty well. I just finished the Ellipse project. It's on France and Excelsior, which has the same front-back relationship, and it has a chiropractor, a restaurant, and nail salon and others. And they've developed, these generally is developing, the new generation of tenants are developing two egresses to the store. There may be a primary and a secondary, but they like the fact that they have that transparency indoors. It's becoming more of a positive, because part of the reason we created the strong glass corner is one, to view it from the car, but also encourage the pestering. And retailers are starting to follow that lead. So the market is starting to work that way. I know you're referring to the CVS, you know, they're still under the traditional method, but there is, I could say just from experience and work with a lot of other urban projects, more and more retailers that are open to the two-door concept, the idea of having more fluidity for traffic passing through their stores. So in terms of insurance, you may require openings and things like that. I could just say from experiential background that tenants are open to this now. It's changed quite a bit in the last three to five years, because the amount, the nature of retail is evolving more in this type of direction of strong corners and rear parking. There's just a lot more examples of that.
Well, there's an example at 49th and France, the Walgreens drugstore is configured exactly the same way this proposal is. The parking's in the back with an alley on the side, and then the entrance is around the front of the building, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that works well. What caught my eye here is our entrances indicated on both sides, which I do think you've addressed. Thank you. You're welcome.
I would assume, Carrie, that if we did a PUD, we could require front entrance or something like that with the...
We certainly could. And again, with the PUD, the city has more strength to follow through with those conditions. We had similar conditions with that 69th and York, but we were kind of hamstrung with the traditional zoning. Didn't require that, but through the PUD, we can.
Other comments? Commissioner Platter?
I had two quick questions. One, when you say retail, I assume there may be food in the mix. So have you considered, you know, outdoor dining or sidewalk seating along there?
Generally, if it were expensive to be non-retail, I think I'll be pushing the parking too hard on this, so it'll probably be what's called dry goods. And so, but if somehow food would work in, I could incorporate outdoor dining, somehow, some way the parking would work, and it's a small coffee shop. That could fit in. And the answer is yes, I'd be open to that if that does occur.
You know, I was just going to say, you know, might want to show a small portion of it or something in that respect to enliven the streetscape as well. You see a lot more along that street, or I think it'd be good to be along that street. And the second question I have is, I don't know if it would work either, but I see your only exit out of the site is coming onto 70th Street. And if people are making a left-hand turn there in a busy time, it probably just won't happen. So I don't know, there's probably not two exits out if possible.
Unfortunately, because of the nature of France.
Something to think about there. I don't know if it could be refigured in this configuration or not, but I think you're going to have, if people want to turn left, you're going to have, really back up this lot at peak times if they insist on turning left, so.
I'll take a look at that. The nature of France is probably the right term, because County Street, I think they're going to probably be pretty tight on me bringing traffic, allowing traffic out in that location. So I think, given traffic, it should be as good as it gets. And I know what you're saying, that at peak areas, there may be some stacking. At 70th, it's fortunate, it is a controlled intersection with lights, and so traffic will get discharged through, which will allow cars to pull out. If it was uncontrolled, I should be more worried about stop sign where it could back up, so. Because I've been out there and watched the cycles of lights, how the traffic flows, so I think I'll be okay. Will there be periods where a car cannot enter the traffic, could make a left at a red light? Yes, but fortunately, at the cycle change, the traffic goes clear through. So there's breaks in traffic, allow to occur.
I do like what you did with the right-in-only off of France. I mean, that's nice. That will stop a lot of traffic, or potential traffic jams along France, too. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Forrest?
I guess the flip side of that, then, would be too, that if they can't take a left out of that parking lot onto 70th, it may end up inadvertently diverting traffic into the surrounding neighborhoods as people try to find an alternate, you know, go around a block or two to get back to the direction they originally wanted to head.
Let me go back to, hang on.
There is a circle, there's a roundabout in Valley View.
If you look what I pulled up here, and you consider that, if you see, you know, it's an island of commercial, so if traffic is forced to make a right, they can circle around this commercial block of buildings and then get back around. So that's why this one site seemed particularly work, because of the commercial behind in the street, where, let's say my building was further to the south, which you're saying could be true. Here I have a handy escape route that can work through, so that's why I thought, you can get away with the right-in, and if traffic was blocked, they can simply circle the block which has commercial on it and come back out.
And there's a roundabout, there's a new roundabout right where you're...
Yeah, right here, they can take the roundabout back, too. So I thought that way. The neighborhood's pretty well protected in this case.
Commissioner Forrest?
I wasn't aware of the roundabout, so I like that idea. The one, my biggest concern, I think, is that has to do with the comprehensive plan, guiding this in a different direction than what's being proposed. And I, so I'd be more comfortable, definitely, I think, with a PUD than I would be in zoning at PCD. So I agree with staff's concerns about that. And I think if we do go that direction, we need to discuss it very carefully. And actually, I mean, the comp plan was a two-year process with a lot of public input, and we need to be careful about not using that as our guide as we go forward. So it's just, I think it's important that we keep that in the back of our minds as we go forward, and I think the proponents should be aware of that, too, that right now, it's a no-no. It's not what we want there. But on the other hand, it's an attractive proposal, and you made some good points about transitioning into the neighborhoods. So I guess that's just my point on that.
Thank you. I just have one traffic-related question again. I'm curious if there's a comparison in terms of traffic impacts on the proposal relative to the existing service station. I don't know if you have numbers on that.
I do not have numbers. I can say this from experience, looking at other traffic studies, gas stations generally, if it, and it depends on the style, if it's a central station, but gas stations have higher traffic and higher turnover than traditional retail, so they...
And that would make sense to me.
Yeah, a strong station will have much more in-and-out motions of more cars than a strong retail.
Yeah, I'm hearing something here that I was going to comment on as well, that my sense is that the station that's there now is not probably really active, not seeing a lot of activity there. I'm just curious, to what extent, I don't know if this is a question that can be answered, but to what extent the existing traffic impacts give any kind of indicator as to what the traffic pose really might be in a retail site of that nature?
The station is sort of a bad measure, because it's sort of tired, you know? But if, let's say, it was a Holiday or Super America, you could probably imagine probably a lot higher flow and traffic volume. You know, I could say this probably have, because it's retail, probably have more, a little more than the existing station, but it would be much less than what I'd say is a food-related use. So I think in, to traffic, and again, this is just my observation, I think it would be somewhat similar use for use, station and day versus retail, be somewhat close to the same, turning movements and traffic patterns in the site.
Well, without seeing the numbers, I'm not sure I'd say that the station is not active, because I'm familiar with it, and people do use that service station, so.
Correct.
Commissioner Forrest?
Since the, we're just here to give feedback, I guess I'm wondering if it's possible to, as you go forward with the design, keep in mind some flexibility for the building over time? And in light of our comp plan, if it's in a building that in the future could be easily adapted, remodeled, or whatever, to accommodate offices of some type?
And I agree, if you look at this, and so I went back to the image, really two factors. You look at the footprint, this could be a nice, comfortable lawyer's office or architect's office, if they could afford the rent, or that kind of a situation. And so it has the right footprint dimension, then just the exterior, you know, the way we've worked the stone and windows, it has the ability to swing both ways. And so the answer to your question is yes.
Other comments, concerns? Mr. Staunton?
I guess I'd just echo some of the things that Commissioner Forrest raised. And what it raises in my mind is this whole, the whole strip on the comprehensive plan map along the west side of France, and what's the long-range plan. Right now, we don't talk about retail, or we talk about limited retail. And I recognize this is one piece, and I'm not, I mean, I'm uncomfortable about the notion of a full-blown small-area plan before you can develop one parcel of it, so I get that. But I just think, I think we're going to find that anytime we're doing an amendment to the comprehensive plan, people are going to do that cautiously and want to really think about the long range. And so I think it needs to fit into a larger narrative about the direction that we want to go on the west side of France in the future.
And I agree, and here's what I responded to, it's really this diagram, that sort of, so to sort of look at the uses.
Yeah.
You know, if you go further south on France, you know, you really have residential budding commercial directly.
Right.
This area, because it's sort of surrounded by a call, a commercial zone, I started the compliance, said, here's one area that may want to guide a little different, just because of the way this works, and especially the property northwest is the office, and this zone, so sort of traditional office to retail and some more of that. So that's sort of where, why I looked at, saying, on a compliance basis, this is the one site in which you could establish...
Well, certainly Valley...
A hard retail corner.
Certainly Valley View, as it cuts between 69th and 70th. And again, you know, with the caveat that I'm not entirely sure what the whole 70th thing is going to make that look like. But it does provide, Valley View clearly has been designed to be a buffer for that residential neighborhood, whereas if you go further south, then you got, you know, no matter what you're doing on the France Avenue side, you got to think about what the back door looks like and how it interfaces and what the buffer is and all that.
Leave that, leave that diagram there. If you look at that diagram and you come down to the bottom of France Avenue, and you start going north on France Avenue, you've got retail, retail, you cross 70th, you've got retail, office, retail, you cross 69th, you've got retail, retail, and then office. So I hear what you're saying about what the comprehensive plan says, but it does say limited retail, and you've already got an abundance of, in fact, along that whole strip that's described on this diagram, you've got retail. Retail is the primary use along there.
That's how I am responding to. This section has evolved into a section of retail established along France, and this seemed to be a logical use to strengthen that corner.
Mr. Forrest?
But yeah, the point of the comprehensive plan is to guide future development. It's not to analyze what is there now. And if, you know, it's a goal to transition what we have there into what is indicated here as office residential, which is some offices and or attached or multifamily homes. So that's, which is quite a stretch from retail. I mean, the goal is to change that side of France Avenue. Again, I'm not speaking, I'm not going to say I'm strongly against this or anything. I'm just very strongly in favor of keeping our comp plan in mind as we go forward and using that as a guide.
Well, then, the comp plan should not have included secondary uses, limited retail, in that section of the comp plan.
But this is all the count, the whole building. I mean, it's not a limited...
Well, I don't know what limited retail means. It means it's not Walmart, but it's retail. Now, you want partial language on what the comprehensive plan means? If we did, if we wanted no retail development on the west side of France Avenue, then the comp plan should have excluded that secondary uses language.
I guess I would say to that, I agree with you, as far as it doesn't all have to be in the same building, but I think that this particular category had in mind a lot of mixed-use-type developments where you had both residential and retail together.
And apparently, and apparently limited industrial in the same area. If you look at the plain language of the comp plan, there's nothing wrong, it seems to me, with this proposal.
That's what I was sort of assuming on that basis. And, you know, to your point, you know, if I had done a mixed-use at housing with retail above, that would have been a fit, you know, same, you know what I'm saying in that. So I just sort of looked at, saying, the plant, you know, the way the comp plan, the way I interpreted it, allowed a transition of retail, so what I call lighter retail, like say, non-Walmart situation, to the residential. So that's the way I interpreted it in terms of that transition, and this site seemed very appropriate for that.
Mr. Staunton?
Yeah, I mean, I think you get the point. The, you know, the purpose is a buffer. It's to make the transition from the really intense retail use at Southdale on the other side, on the east side of France. And I'm sure, as we would go through a comprehensive plan amendment process, that would be the nature of the discussion, is what in this, you know, does it make sense, as the chair says, maybe to divide this off from what's further down south on France Avenue? I mean, it's just a topic that has to be addressed, and I think we're sensitive to the fact that, you know, comprehensive plan changes are going to get a lot of scrutiny these days.
And understood, and, you know, and that's okay, because I think this is good scrutiny, because, you know, I believe this is an appropriate transition for this area that is still applicable to the comprehensive plan.
And I don't disagree with your logic.
Are we changing the comprehensive plan, though? That's my, how are we changing the comprehensive plan?
Oh, do you think you could be done without it?
Yeah. Carrie?
Yeah, I don't see this as a need for an amendment to the comprehensive plan. We have to address the issue of this doesn't, or this does or doesn't raise to the level of a small-area plan. In terms of addressing the comprehensive plan, and it's, I'm talking about limited retail, if we go through the PUD, the first step of the PUD rezoning, and we talk about uses that would be allowed, I would envision listing uses that are allowed in our PCD one district. Those are zoning districts traditionally right next to low-density residential, you know, our small neighborhood commercial-type uses. So I think if we stuck to those uses, they don't allow drive-throughs, that more intense type of uses that we see in our PCD three district. If we limited the uses to PCD one-type uses within the PUD, we would be covered.
Mr. Forrest?
I think that, and I, I mean, I don't disagree with what's been said here, and I do like the fact that this is a low-profile, fairly subtle building being proposed. And again, that's why I really feel that a PUD would be extremely useful, and because then we can, it can even be more specific. It could, as far, it wouldn't have to be PCD one uses, it could be this, this, and this, and, or anything that we wanted to exclude. So I think that's a great way to go.
Other comments?
General question.
Commissioner Carpenter?
To what extent do you think that the building design is what you would ultimately move forward with, or is this more just a template on a piece of paper to...
This would be specific to the design. I mean, this is a direction, and if you've seen the ellipse, and seen the style there, and actually, Sean, do you have the ellipse? Are they underneath there? Sorry. I don't know if I have the overhead camera. These are a little bit small, but, you know, the same idea of the limestone base and punched openings I did in Ellipse Excelsior, same idea, I would be staying within this design parameter, because I think it's appropriate for the corner, because when it, it's not overly flashing, has a nice stone base that works for it. Can you move it up here? And, you know, the thought of the masonry base, the punched openings, which scale, I think, a little better with residential use, it's a little softer, meaning the tradition beyond, and I think works better with the idea of the 70th plan, which is a greener environment. This design is really sort of specific to the corner, and this is a design to be sticking with, supposedly, a glass box or something like that, so.
Sure.
This was specific to the context.
I like it in that context, maybe, I think it really does look nice.
Thank you.
Other comments? I like, I like the idea of this, even though my wife likes to use that gas station because they pump the gas there.
They still don't want to cross the street.
If this comes into being, I'll deal with that myself. But, the idea that we can take a corner that now has a gas station and really upgrade the corner is, not to say gas stations are bad, but really upgrade the corner in terms of aesthetics and use, I think is a wonderful thing. Other comments? Commissioner Forrest?
I do appreciate your sensitivity to that appearance, and it's a really good argument that that sounds a lot more attractive than another boxy office building stretching along France, so.
No, thank you. No, the hope is if we could set a good precedent here, me, spread through what you call the redevelopment area of Southdale.
Other questions, concerns, comments? Great, thank you, Mr. DeVolos, we appreciate it. Did anybody else wish to comment on this?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kerry, I assume that our comments will be forwarded to the council. There's no particular action we have to take at this time, is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. Correspondence and petitions you received in your packet, the council connection, any comments or concerns about that? Any other correspondence that should be called to our attention? Commissioner Platter?
I'm just curious if there's any updates on the cooling tower at York Gardens, did that get moved, or anything happen to reduce the noise today?
He, yeah, the council did, they agreed to move the unit, and the council approved that. They, one of the conditions that they put on it was that the noise reduction kit needed to be ordered right away and building permits pulled. They did that the next day, right after the council meeting, so they are moving forward with it. The equipment has been ordered, it's going to take, it'll take a few weeks, but it's moving along.
Commissioner Staunton?
I just wanted to ask on the, I noticed in the council connection, the council here's proposal for Sports Dome, and that there is a discussion about that being forwarded to the park board, or that the park board would determine the best location and whether it should be operated by the city private organization or through a public-private partnership. Just wondering, Kerry, if you have any thoughts about whether they would ask us to take a look at that in terms of location, in terms of its impact on other resources, or is there any discussion about having the planning commission review that as well?
This will come before the planning commission at some point, assuming it's something that the city wants to get involved with. A conditional use permit is required no matter where they put it. So, once they start zooming in or zeroing in on a site or two, it might be a good idea to run it by the planning commission even before a conditional use permit is.
I guess what I just think is, you know, we're doing some planning in the Grandview area, and just trying to think about the future, and to the extent we can be thinking about those things in the context of what else is being planned around the community, it just helps to put it in context, and that we ought to be, we ought to be aware of how the areas that we're looking at fit in the larger puzzle.
Other chair or commission member comments? I don't have any comments. Commissioner Staunton?
I guess I would just add on that note, that the Grandview small-area planning process continues. We have been working over the last month or so to retain a team of consultants and develop a work plan for the fall, when the real substantive work of trying to convert the seven guiding principles for the area into a small-area plan will be conducted. And we are having a steering committee meeting tomorrow night, August 18th, Thursday, August 18th, at the senior center at 7:00 PM. And at that meeting, we intend to visit with the steering committee about the proposed team of consulting experts, as well as the proposed work plan. We followed a slightly different process than has been followed in the past to try to retain consultants. We, instead of putting out a large RFP, we just put out a six, or a brief letter asking for consultants to express interest in six pages or less, and we took a look at those expressions of interest, and we narrowed it to a field of people we interviewed. And then, we cobbled a team together, made up of parts of different teams that interviewed with us. And so, we think we've really tailored a group of folks who are going to be a real good fit for that neighborhood and for what we're trying to accomplish there. So, we're excited to get our organizational and back-office work out of the way and start the, as we say, the fun stuff in September. So, look forward to continuing that process.
Great, thank you. Other comments by the commission? Comments from staff?
I do, just to give you an update, at last night's council meeting, the council considered the subdivision on Brookview. You may recall, you recommended approval of that on a four-to-three vote. The council considered it, and they approved the subdivision on a four-to-one vote. So, they will be coming forward with their final plat, and we'll see two houses on that site.
Thank you. Other comments? All right. Did you, anybody else? All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
For second? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? We are adjourned.